Tina?
Mayor Rowan Dykes.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Here. Glad to say you're here this time.
Alderman Mike Council. Alderman Bobby Knight.
Here.
Honor Woman Luanna Ottinger.
Here.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Here.
City Attorney Terry Hirsch.
Here.
City Administrator James Finkson.
Here.
We do have a quorum. We will now entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting, regular session, May 12, 2020.
Make a motion with the President.
Second.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to approve the minutes of the previous meeting for the regular session of May 12, 2020. It's been properly seconded. Will approved by the normal sign of aye.
Aye.
And all opposed. Hearing none, motion carries. We now have proclamations or recognition of citizens by the mayor or other aldermen. I would like to say that I'm also happy to see Coach Profit back and to have seen him in relatively good health compared to what I heard about while you were in the hospital. So, thank you. Thank you. Glad you're back.
Thank you.
You wanted to add something?
Well, I wanted to just say a word that if people don't realize what a small town is, what you go through, and how many people here got in touch with me or had some communication with me or got word to me, I just want to tell them thank you from my heart that our every department, the fire department, the police department, every department, the recreation department, every apartment, which one did I leave out?
The street.
Street. Street, coming up here, took care of my wife, got her garbage cans and empty trash. I don't say what they're supposed to, but they did things beyond the call. And I just want the whole bus to know how much I appreciate what they did.
I'd also like to say that for those of you who aren't aware, the last, about 10 days ago now, we had a situation here in our town that I am very proud to say, and the way it was handled was very organized, very professional. I'd like to congratulate Chief Schultz and the other officers that participated in that, getting that done. It was really very organized, and I was very impressed with the way it was handled. Thank you, Chief Schultz, and the other officers that were present. You did a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else that'd like to add anything? No? Okay. We now have our communications from our city administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. The city has continued with our COVID process since the last meeting. We have reopened the swimming pool at the community center to exercise. We have opened the tennis courts. We have opened the basketball courts. One thing, just of a personal note, we were taking all kinds of grief online about the tennis courts and the basketball courts being closed, and we've opened them up and not yet seen anybody on them. So, all these people that were worried about exercising, I don't know what happened to them. We got it open and they hadn't showed up, but I think that's just more of a tribute to social media than anything. We had our first concert. We were worried about those, but when the governor's guidelines changed to allow outdoor venues, we had our first concert last Thursday. The weather did not cooperate, and we had a torrential downpour at the very beginning of it that kind of set the tone for the rest of the night, and we ended up with the lowest turnout we'd had, had a good band first time we'd had them. So, I hated that for them. They didn't have, but to their credit, they stayed extra for the time that they had to run undercover while it rained. But we drew circles on the ground like they've done in other cities at their events to social distance. We spread out the shelters farther apart to meet the guidelines, and hopefully the next one, next Thursday, we'll get better weather and have more participation. The only other thing I have is, as you noted in the public hearing portion, we had a late amendment to the budget amendment for the grammar school. And so, instead of second reading tonight, we have the first reading of the amended amendment. That's a tongue twister.
Here.
I do need for the mayor to set a date for a called meeting, to have a second reading of that amended amendment. So, if you don't mind, possibly at this time, if you could confer and determine so we can set a date and a time for a called meeting, please.
Okay. Everyone take a look at their calendar and see what they have available for a called meeting, maybe for next week.
Can you name that right?
When?
Any day.
Any day. Okay.
Me and Bobby's flesh.
Okay. I don't have my calendar with me.
I'm on vacation next week.
You're on vacation next week? Okay.
Just the 17th of next week.
Any day but the 17th.
Any day.
Three here, of course.
And Mike, we'd have to check with Mike to, Mike Council, to see if he'd be available.
My dear Tuesday.
17th for you?
That's next week.
Oh, you're next week. Okay. Pardon me? It's Wednesday.
17th, we can't do it?
17th.
So, we wouldn't have a quorum, assuming Mike would be working, so we could do it. Maybe Tuesday or Thursday.
Thursday. How about 16th of Tuesday?
Today. Coach, can we wait until today?
Tuesday.
Should be.
Luanna, is that all right with you if we?
If y'all go help with that, we sure.
And we'll contact Mike to see, check his availability also.
5:30.
5:30, Tuesday to 16th.
Tuesday to 16th at 5:30?
Oh, we did have. I'll check with him. Tuesday, 5:30 on the 16th. Okay.
Okay. Thank you, sir. That's all I have.
That's all you have? Okay. Item number six is appointment of boards, commissions, and committees. Item A is consideration of reappointment to the planning commission, Mr. Rick Carr.
I'll make that motion to reappoint Mr. Rick Carr.
I'll shake. We don't need a roll call on this, do we? All right, we have a motion on the board to reappoint Mr. Rick Carr to the planning commission. It's been properly seconded. Will approved by the normal sign of aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Item B, consideration of reappointment to the planning commission, Mr. Randall Freeman.
I'll make the motion, Mr. Seth Randall Freeman.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the board for reappointment to the planning commission, Mr. Randall Freeman. It has been properly seconded. Will approved by the normal sign of aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. We have item C is consideration of appointment to the Cock County Partnership Board. Will accept nominations for that position.
I would like to nominate Alderman Steve Smith.
I'll second you.
Any other nominations? Hearing none. Have a motion on the board to appoint Mr. Steve Smith, Alderman Steve Smith, to the Cock County Partnership Board. It's been properly seconded. Will approved by the normal sign of aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
Tuesday for position.
Tuesday, 5:30.
5:30.
For Mr. 16th. Reports from committees, members, council, and other officers. Tanner Preservation Alliance. Mr. Carver, could you give us a brief update, please?
I'm 30 seconds behind. I'm sure we're streaming okay. We removed a set of stairs from the back of the building, the city did, yesterday. We're going to brick up a door. It's not in the life safety plan, so it doesn't affect anything with the building. Fire Marshal gave us the okay on that. Now, we can, and that's going to help with stormwater situation, because we had, if you can see the back of the building in your mind's eye, that door went down a couple of feet from where the surface, from where the earth was, and then we were trying to work out a weird U-shaped thing that got the water out of that area, but taking that down is going to help tremendously. So, electricians come in early next week, and then you should see a lot of activity back up there with everybody. If the subs have people to work, because they've had an issue with that, too, but yeah, electrician was behind because of the pandemic we're having, but he should be able to be there early next week, and then once that happens, everything should look like there's stuff going on again.
Have any info on an updated completion date?
I've been saying midsummer, so I'd get shoot with mid-July, because that's about five weeks from now, as long as we don't see any further delays. But it's not costing us any money, and in fact, tapping the brakes a little bit probably saved us money by thinking it through and getting our own guys to do some of the stuff, so.
I saw you work in that part area. Appreciate you.
I was standing around sweating, but it felt like work, and I think that's, the street department guys were the ones doing the work, but I was supervising, and I'll do that with air quotes.
And we feel like this is going to be ready in time for Walter State to start classes?
Yes. Couple of those guys came up yesterday, and we're walking through and looking at it, and they're still not 100% certain if they're going to be on campus. They're leaning towards that. Northeast State has moved up their semester, but Walter State isn't planning to do that at the moment, so we're still looking at August for them to be in there. But I mean, they've ordered their furniture, and if they'll stop changing where they want things on the wall, it'll be easier on me in my life, but they've had little audibles they've called here and there on everything, but yeah, we're still on track for that.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Item A, old business, unfinished business. Item A is consideration of the second reading of ordinance number 2020-02, budget amendment for the city of Newport.
And Mayor, I'll read the caption of that ordinance into the record. It's ordinance 2020-02, an ordinance of amending the annual operating budget and capital program for the city of Newport, Tennessee, fiscal year 2019-2020. We need a motion.
Any discussion?
I'll make a motion for that.
Okay. We have a motion on the board to approve the second reading, ordinance number 2020-02, budget amendment for the city of Newport. We need roll call?
Yes, sir.
We need roll call, please, for approval.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Yes.
Honor Woman Luanna Ottinger?
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item B is consideration of the first reading of amended ordinance number 2020-03, budget amendment for the Newport Grammar School.
Mayor, that ordinance is ordinance 2020-03, an ordinance amending the annual operating budget and capital program for the city of Newport, Tennessee, fiscal year 2019-2020 for Newport Grammar School.
Discussion. Need a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Hang on, need a second.
Okay.
Okay, all right. We have a motion on the board to approve the amended ordinance number 2020-03, budget amendment for the Newport Grammar School. Need roll call, please.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Yes.
Honor Woman Luanna Ottinger?
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item C is consideration of second reading of ordinance number 2020-04, budget for the city of Newport for fiscal year 2020-21.
Mayor, that's ordinance number 2020-04, an ordinance of the city of Newport, Tennessee, adopting the annual operating and capital budget for the city of Newport, and the annual budget for the Newport Grammar School, and the tax rate for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2020, and ending June 30, 2021.
Discussion. Need a motion?
Make a motion to.
I didn't hear it. I didn't hear it first. Who made the original motion?
I'm sorry.
Steve made it.
Steve made the, okay. I'm going to second it, okay. We do have a motion on the board then to approve reading of ordinance number 2020-04, budget for the city of Newport for the fiscal year 2020-21. We need a roll call, please.
Alderman Bobby Knight?
Yes.
Honor Woman Luanna Ottinger?
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. We're on to new business. We have Mr. Frank McDaniel's here to give us a brief report about the audit report for 2019, 2020.
He said brief. Emphasize brief. I've never been brief, but I'll try to be brief.
And I'll do my best.
You have a pretty expansive booklet, and of course, it includes all the city's finances and Newport Grammar School's finances, and also your enterprise or business type activities, which is the departments of Newport Utilities. So, all that is combined in this report. And of course, we have two sets of financials. If you looked at the table of contents, there's one that's kind of an entity-wide that's accrual-based, and then there's your fund basis statements, which bore mere what your budgets are that you're adopting tonight for the next year. And so, those are particular, probably more interest to you possibly than the government-wide statements. But we did examine the, and audit, the city's financial statements, which includes all their funds, and we also audited the school system's financial statements and all of their funds, and combined the report of the Newport Utilities, which is audited by other auditors, in this report. And if you turn over to page four, there is an auditor's report there, and it gives pretty standard language as to an introduction of what we're auditing. It does discuss the fact in the third paragraph that a significant amount of assets and revenues are audited by other auditors at Newport Electric and Newport Broadband Department and the Newport Water and Sewer Systems, and those statistics are given there. We do, on page five, we do express a unmodified or clean opinion on all of the financial statements of the city and the school system. We do refer to the fact that the Newport Utilities are audited by other auditors, and we're relying on their audit for the inclusion of that information in this report. In the middle of page five, there's some other required supplementary information required by governmental accounting standards, which is management discussion analysis, and certain information about your pension plans that you participate in under the Tennessee Consolidated Retirement System for both the city and the schools, and then certain OPEB ratios related to post-employment benefits that are offered post-retirement, and all of those involve actuarial studies, so there's charts that are included as required information. Those are not audited by us, but we do compare them to the financial statements to make sure they are in agreement with the statements that we've audited. And then the other information that's included is the assistant schedule, federal and state awards, which does cause Newport to have to have a single audit almost every year because of the amount of federal assistance that you receive exceeding $750,000 of expenditures in any given year, and so, we do refer to that in our opinion, along with the other schedules that are included, most of which are required by the Comptroller of Tennessee. And those will be listed in the table of contents under other supplementary information. You can find that there. We do express an opinion on that information and say that it is fairly stated in relationship to the financial statements taken as a whole, so we express positive assurance that those statistical tables in that section are audited by us. Then lastly, we point out on page six that we have issued another report on our consideration of internal control and compliance with laws and regulations, and that report's included in this financial statement, and you'll see that in a few minutes I'll turn over to it. The management discussion analysis starts on page seven, and that's a good synopsis of the financial activity for the year. I won't point out many highlights. You can read those nine or 10 pages, and they'll give you a good overview, but if you turn to page 10, there is comparative tables on page 10 of the governmental activities and the business type activity between 19 and 18. And of course, it shows total assets, which increased slightly for the year for the governmental activities. Long-term liabilities actually decreased, and then you have your equity position, which is measured here on the accrual basis of accounting. Citywide, and this does include all debt and all infrastructure assets, which would be like streets and roads and signalization, those types of assets which are depreciated annually, and the net position of the city and the schools is 25,027,586. There's some charts that follow. If you turn over to page 12, there's a table here that shows revenues and expenditures for the year, and you can see fairly comparative net position change in the first two columns. Now, I'm ignoring the last two columns, because again, that is Newport Utilities, and their report has already been reported on by their auditor about a month and a half ago or so, so we're kind of ignoring that in our discussion, but their board has already reviewed that report. The total program expenses for the year were slightly, about six, almost 16 and a half million dollars. Total revenues were slightly less than 19 million dollars, and the total change in net position was almost 2 and 1/2 million dollars for the year compared to 2.9 million in the previous year. So, again, fairly comparable. Again, there's some pie charts that follow on page 13 that kind of break down where you are receiving your revenues from and the expenditures, and of course, that is somewhat skewed because you have the utilities included in that table, and they're basically almost 80% of the revenues and 80% of the expenditures. If you turn over to page 21, this is where the financial statements start, and this is more of a detailed look. This is pretty small print, probably be a little hard to see, but the assets and deferred outflows are on the first page, and the liability and the deferred outflows and the equity are on page 22, and this will tie back into the table we just looked at in the management discussion analysis showing the equity position of the funds. And then on page 23, this is a statement of activities, and this kind of measures expenses against revenues generated and how you fund the shortfall of charges and operating charges through general revenues. So, this table kind of goes from left to right, and then if you go down the fifth column over, you'll see that the schools and the city together had a shortfall of revenues of 9,775, and then that was made up of general revenues, which totaled over 12 million dollars, and there's your net position change again of 2,558,448, which we looked at in the prior table. Now, the schedules that start on the next page, page 24, is your fund statements, and this would bore mirror the assets and the liabilities and the expenditures and revenues that you would look at normally when you're looking at your budget document. You have your assets for the general fund, which covers most of the operations of the city. Your assets were 12,735, and your total liabilities were 477,000, and you had some deferred inflows for your property taxes attached as a lien at the beginning of the calendar year, but they're not billed until September, so there's a receivable and a deferred outflow that match each other included in the statements, and that's the primary number in that deferred inflow of resources number. Then you look down in your fund balances, and you have some restricted funds, some assigned funds, and then some unassigned funds. And particularly, I'll point out that the unassigned funds are 7,72871. That would be the equity position that the city came out of that year available to spend if you decided to dip into it to some degree. And so, that's sort of your rainy day fund against your annual expenditures. And if you flip over to the next page, there's a bridge statement that basically takes you from this balance sheet to the first balance sheet that we looked at and all the changes that are included. And you can see there's numerous changes here, because we pick up all the long-term assets, all the long-term liabilities, and everything to do with pension accruals. And you all, the school participates in up to three pension plans, and here at the city, basically, there's two, and they're treated a little bit different for regular employees versus fire and police. So, all of that activity is buried in this statement, too, to do the conversion. If you go over to page 27, I'll just quickly look here. You can see that the general fund's revenues were 10,715. General fund had expenditures of 9,132. There was transfers out of 1,007, in lieu of taxes received from the utilities of 1,003, down at the bottom of the first column, and the revenues and financing sources exceeded expenditures by 1,272 for the year, which is positive growth. Put you in an equity position of 8,82, which if you go back to the previous balance sheet, that number will tie into the equity position in total. But out of that, out of that 8,82, the 7,7 is the unrestricted or unassigned amount. The other fund that's presented here as a major display fund is the general purpose school fund, and you can see here, their total revenues were 5,547. They had educational expenditures of just slightly less than 5,800,000. They had a transfer from the city government of 611,000, and they ended the year with a positive increase in their fund balance of 362,057 to start their year with additional growth that they already had. So, they ended the fiscal year with a fund balance of almost, little over 2,400,000. And if you look at that, a lot of times from a ratio standpoint, we will look at the fund balance, especially unassigned fund balance, as a percentage of expenditures, and that kind of gives you a ratio of what your coverage is. And an excellent target is obviously, I think, a minimum of 40%, and a lot of people like to keep 50 to 60%. So, you all are well in that range, and if you look back at your financial statements, let's say eight years ago, seven years ago, you would have saw a pretty bleak difference between where you were then and where you are now. You've made vast improvements financially. So, I congratulate your management and the board on being able to do that, turn your cash flow position around and your equity position around. There's a statement again that bridges this statement, and then after that- There's a statement again that bridges this statement, and then, after that, you have the proprietary funds. Again, I'm not going to touch on those. You keep on going, and starting on Page Thirty-three through to the footnotes, there's budget comparisons. So, you can actually see your adopted budget original, second column, your final budget after amendments, and the third column, your actual for 2019, and then, also, your actual for 2018 for comparative purposes. And that is there for the two major funds, which is the general fund and the general purpose school fund. The notes start on Page Forty-eight, and they go on for a lot of pages, and I'm not going to bore you with that. But if you're interested in a particular item like your capital assets, your debt, long-term debt, your pensions, your post-employment benefits, and this would include the city, the schools, and the utilities. It's all in these footnotes. So, I would point out that you can read these one night when you really want to go to sleep because they'll put you there in a hurry. And then, the Required Supplementary Information starts on Page Ninety-Six, and this is the area where you have these pension and OPEB schedules and comparisons. Eventually, on Page Ninety-Six, we'll start having to turn this page sideways, and it might end up even being two pages because we're going to end up with ten-year tables on all of these. These were adopted in 2014 for the first time under Governmental Accounting Standard Number Sixty-seven and Sixty-eight. And so, these have been going in since that year to reflect on your balance sheet at the empty wide level, your net pension liability under your TCRS participation. And that's the same for the schools. It would be reflected their share over there, too. Then, on Page Ninety-seven, that table continues, and these go on, and you will see, like on Page Ninety-eight, the school has numerous plans. And all of this has went into effect since 2014. It requires the inclusion of all the actuarial entries to reflect pension cost on an actuarial basis. And we're recording all this activity at the city level and also the school level. And the schools actually has several pension plans, so we go through this reiteration numerous times for them because they have multiple plan participation. The OPEB plans start on Page, I think, One-O-Five, One-O-Six, and they go all the way through to One-O-Four, I guess, where they end. The assisted schedule is on One-O-Five. This is all the federal grants, and most of those, a lot of them are concentrated at the school system on a normal basis. Sometimes, that will not necessarily be true. Sometimes, the city will have a community development block grant or some other kind of home assistance grant or a T-DOT grant. And sometimes, federal money will flow through here from the city side, too. And the measurement of which programs to test is pretty complicated because you take a risk approach, and if you did a program last year, it goes into a different bucket, and you don't consider it till you pick other programs. So, the, you know, trying to filter down through the grant programs to determine which ones to actually select to test in detail by us is a fairly complicated and complex affair. But we do test the federal assistance. Then, the schedules that follow are the other funds, and they're much smaller funds that don't meet the criteria for major display. Those would be like, if you looked over on the top of Page One-O-Nine, you'll see some of these listed. They start here with budget comparisons. You have school federal projects. You have schools cafeteria fund. We have other funds. And then, of course, the, we had, city has a capital fund and a drug fund. And so, all those are kind of rolled up into one number. And then, the information that's after that, debt amortizations, capital, atlays, property tax changes, all of that are required by the comptroller, and all of that information's in here. And then, finally, if you turn over to Page One-Thirty-One, this is the other report that we issue on internal control and compliance. It talks about some terms here in the second and third, fourth paragraph related to deficiencies in internal control and material weaknesses in internal control that we consider to be a more severe deficiency. And we're required to review internal control, although we don't report on it and give an opinion about it at city level or at school level. We do consider it while we're doing our audit planning and our risk assessments related to determining what test we're going to be doing. And in doing that, we basically make a determination, is there anything that needs to be reported to the governing body? We didn't have any findings. We had one finding last year, and that finding was cleared up. So, we don't have any findings during this particular audit. The city got a, basically, a clean report here. On One-Thirty-Three, the major programs that we tested, we give a report on that and give positive assurance that the city was in compliance and the school was in compliance with those major programs that we tested. And if you turn it to One-Thirty-Six, there's a summary, and you can see here, in this current year, down under Item G, those are the programs that we tested, and all of those were at the school system. Title I, IDB, and IDD preschool. And we had no compliance findings with any of those programs. And then, we do indicate that those findings are cleared up. So, if no one asks any questions, or if you do have any questions, I'll entertain them, but I'll wrap it up. I know that's exciting.
That was very brief, Mr. McDaniel. Considering all the information contained in here, sorry. I'm sorry. Thank you for that report.
I have with me Haley Slagle, and she has, is, for several years, has been the onsite audit manager for the engagement. And so, if you have any questions at all that come up after you delve into the report, feel free to call either of us.
We had Haley in school, and she's a perv, so.
Who kept who straight?
Can't be straight. I'll tell you a story on when you get outside. I'd like to comment, hang James on the way they handle things and how they make us come out with a report like that. Appreciate it.
Always nice to get a clean audit report. So, any other questions? Okay. Move on to Item B then, is consideration of renewal of the audit contract for the city of Newport.
It's that time again where we need to hire or renew the auditor for this coming year, and it is certainly up to the board, but it would be our recommendation that we continue on with our relationship with Brown and McDaniel.
Are there any significant changes to the contract for coming year?
There was a small 4.2% increase, which really only amounts to right under $1,300. Other than that, there was no significant increase or other change.
We entertain a motion to approve?
I'm making a motion.
Second.
Okay. Excuse me. You have a motion to approve the renewal of the audit contract for the city of Newport with Brown, Jacob, and McDaniel's? It's been properly seconded. Will approved by the normal sign of aye?
Aye.
I heard, I think I heard you say, okay. Any nays? Okay. And here none, motion carries. Item C is consideration of emergency medical responder agreement between first-call ambulance and the city of Newport.
Yes. Basically, I just had to put my name on the, on the form. We're taking Chief Reagan off. It's, it's pretty much the same. There may have been a few little different wordings and stuff in there, but it's basically the same agreement as we've had with them for years.
No increases? Financial agreements, all the same?
Yeah, yeah, all those are the same.
Okay. Bobby Gunn made the motion?
Steve.
Second.
Okay. All right, we have a motion on the board, excuse me, to approve the emergency medical responder agreement between first-call ambulance and the city of Newport. It's been properly seconded. Please approved by the normal sign of aye?
Aye.
And all opposed? Here and the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy. Item D is consideration of state highway maintenance contract.
Mayor, this is a contract between the city and the state of Tennessee, T-DOT, that has been in place since 1994. And I wish it would go up. It's still about the same amount that it was in 1994. It's about $53,000 a year that we are reimbursed for maintenance that we do along the state highway, and it comes up for renewal each year, and it stays pretty much the same every year.
We need a motion to approve.
I'm making a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion on the board then to approve the state highway maintenance contract. It's been properly seconded. Please approved by the normal sign of aye?
Aye.
And all opposed? Here and none, motion carries.
Did anybody in House of James get that raised a little bit?
We've tried to do that, and they, they won't entertain it. They say that it is what it is, and maybe next year. And so, we just, you know, the, we don't lose anything on it. It's just that when our costs go up, what we charge them goes up. And so, it's just that we can do less every year because the cost of doing business goes up because we have set rates for the use of the equipment, the manpower, and those are turned into the state on a form that they have. And so, when our costs go up, then the amount to do each task goes up. So, repairing potholes or storm drains or what have you, as those costs increase, there's less that we can do to be reimbursed for. We don't, like I say, we don't lose any money, but they haven't updated in twenty-something years. And we could do a lot more with it when it began than we can now. But yeah, we bring that up about every year. Is there not some way we could try to get that increased, and they just, they won't do it? We won't give up, but maybe one day they'll, they'll be open to it.
Any idea of how many state miles of state road we've maintained?
It's twenty-two, about twenty-two and a half, something like that, I think, inside the city limits. There's the, the two cross, the highways, the main highways that crisscross the city limits. I think it's around twenty-two and a half miles.
I was on that in the first quarter.
Okay. Well, I think we, it's already been approved. That was just, that was just a question after that, and motion already carried, hadn't had enough, okay. All right, Item E is discussion of lien on property on 136 Blazer Street.
Mr. Cardy McSwain the Fourth is here on behalf of Jeff Green, who is the executor of this foundation in charge of this project. But Mr. Green couldn't be here. He had a conflict and couldn't be in two places at one time, and he, he asked me, would it be all right if Cardy stood in in his, his place? And I told him that'd be fine. And if anything, I'm sure he knows all about it, but anything I can add, I'll jump in. But I'm sure he's quite capable to explain it.
See, Cardy kind of lost something from the time he walked in, though.
Yeah, handed her off to her mama, so. So, yeah, well, Jeff is the trustee, and, and our office is working on the closing where they've sold this house that was, you've probably seen the letter, but it was donated by the city, and then, the city put a, they agreed to put a lien on it because the city couldn't just hand it over like that. But now, he's, the trust has sold it, and they're gonna give the, what money's left. With the lien on there, he wasn't really getting hardly any money, so they've asked that it be settled for $15,000, that they'd be paid from the closing proceeds. And what's left would go to Brandon, and our office isn't getting any fee or anything.
If you look at that situation, it's an all-win situation for the city because you can't settle that plan.
The city holds a lien on it?
The city holds a lien, and, and they're asking that they settle it for, it's, the full amount was $17,875, and he's asking to settle it for $15,000.
The, to try to make a long story short, back in around 2012, eleven, twelve, the community wanted to do this project to help Brandon Williams, who, if you'll recall, was the little, the little boy who got his ears chewed off by the pit bulls back at the time. And the, the city was under the impression that they could pay for the property with a grant and went ahead before they got a grant approved and purchased the property and then donated it, and the house was subsequently built on it. Then, the city found out that they could not get grant money to pay for it. So, it was paid technically, it was paid for by local tax dollars, which was ruled should not have been done at the time. And when I came in in 2013, the only thing that I could do to try to secure the city's money back was put a lien on the property. And so, you know, if, if Mr. Williams had lived there in perpetuity, then we would have never gotten anything back. But because that he has moved away, the foundation has sold the property, now we get something back. And so, I, to be honest with you, when I put the lien on in discussions with Terry and with Jeff Green at the time, I felt it was highly unlikely we would ever get any money back. But that was the only action we could take at the time. And so, now, we have an opportunity to get something back. And I, I think that that's, in negotiations with Mr. Green, I told him, we were back and forth a little bit, and when, when he come up with the number of $15,000, I told him I felt like that was a fair offer and that I would make the recommendation that we accept that offer.
All right. Board's pleasure.
I'm making a motion to accept, no, $15,000.
Okay, we have a motion on the board to release the lien on property at 136 Blazer Street for the amount of $15,000. It's been properly seconded. Will please approved by the normal sign of aye?
Aye.
We need a roll call. All right, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Cardy. Item F is consideration of rural accelerator leadership proposal for born learning signage to be placed at the city park. Ms. Kathy Hope is here to present the proposal.
So, I am just representing the leadership table of which Mayor Dyke sits on and also Ms. Burchett, Director Burchett. So, we do have a committee of twelve folks, and they've come up with this recommendation that we establish a born learning trail at the Newport City Park. And I think you have some information about it. It actually involves ten signs. They will be placed on either four-by-four pressure-treated posts or a post like, like a road sign would be on, the metal post, or it could even be a round post. I wouldn't decide that. We'll have a committee of people that takes care of, of, you know, establishing the trail and everything. You have some pictures there to see what it looks like. We would do it around the walking trail at Newport City Park. I don't think it would take up the entire walking trail. Those would space the placards too far apart. This is for early learning, so if you've looked at it, you know, it's like mothers talking, or adults, I should say, talking to their children and saying to them, you know, listen to birds. You're looking at trees, you're looking at flowers. There's one point where they talk about shapes. There's a point where they talk about numbers, and they play hopscotch or letters, and they have the ABCs. It would require us not only to erect the signs, which there are ten of those again. I've spoke to some people who have, who have developed a born learning trail in their communities. Marstown has it Fred Miller Park. Marstown has it Fred Miller Park. I didn't know it till I started researching this, but they're very pleased with theirs, and it's getting a lot of high-traffic activity. But there are about three or four of the signs that require us to do some painting on the pavement where you're walking, because they stop and they look at shapes, or they look at the letters, or they play the hopscotch. The rural accelerator initiative in talking with Mayor Dykes would pay for the signage. They would buy the signs, they'll buy the posts, they'll buy the paint. We might ask the Parks and Rec people if they could help erect the signs, dig the holes and put the signs in. If that is not possible, I guess we could establish some volunteers maybe to help with that. I did list a website, and I know, we're asking for approval tonight, so I can go ahead and order them and get this started. But you can go on there and even see some videos of other communities across the country who have done theirs and some, you know, activities they've done around it. This is a United Way product, and like I say, it's got very high reviews from people who have enacted the, or who have established these born learning trails. Do you have any questions?
Mayor, the only thing that I would have, it's not really a question, but a comment. Of course, the city Parks and Rec could definitely erect these signs, but I would request, it was mentioned that a committee would decide on what the posts would be and all that. I would ask that either Mr. Dockry or a representative of his choice be involved in that process, because we certainly were for anything that is a step forward to improve the park and the usage of the park, but we still want to maintain the aesthetics that Mr. Dockry has worked hard for 25 years to establish and maintain there. And I would certainly want his input to make sure that it stays within his guidelines and his plans.
I would nominate Mr. Dockry to be on that committee.
And we do, too. We want it to be very nice. We want it to be something the city's proud of, and, you know, families love to come out and enjoy, so.
You willing to serve Tim?
Of course.
Didn't mean to put you on the spot, but, okay. All right. Consideration. What's the board's pleasure?
I make a motion to approve the born learning trail signage.
I'll second that.
All right. We do have a motion on the board to approve the rural accelerator leadership proposal for born learning signage to be placed at City Park. And we'll amend that to have Mr. Tim Dockry to participate on the committee to erect those signs and choose some of the materials and placement. It has been properly seconded. Please approved by the normal sign of aye?
Aye.
All right. Any nays?
Kathy, you work hard, appreciate what you did.
Here and none, motion carries. Item G is consideration of a mural placement for East Tennessee Artscapes. Ms. Greta Carr, program director, is presenting.
Hello. Hey. How are y'all today?
Welcome back.
Thank you very much. I want to apologize for coming underprepared to last month's meeting. The only excuse I have to give you is that 2020 has frazzled my brain and kind of limited my professionalism a little bit, being out of work so long. But I come today with the front page here shows you the mural proposal, which gives you a sketch, I'll show it from here, gives you a good sketch of, just a draft of what we're proposing for the mural at 325 East Broadway on that fur car wall which actually faces the alleyway. So, you'd only see it if you're driving one-way. This is the Zen Den Yoga Studio owned by Ms. Alicia Waite, and Artscapes will just be assistant in the project. And then behind that sketch there, you'll find a full portfolio of Ms. Shannon Kelly's work, so you can see kind of the quality of things that she's done, all within, a lot of it within Cock County, and all of it within East Tennessee here. And I appreciate y'all giving me the opportunity to come back. I thank you so much. I did go to the planning commission, we've been here presenting the portfolios to them, and they seem well in support of the mural, so I'm happy to answer any questions anybody has about the content or anything. And again, that's just a rough sketch of it, but the only content is just going to be native plants and foliage on that wall there. And actually, I think during inspection, Mr. Jeremy saw the wall, the inner wall of the mural that's already there inside the building. I'd be happy to hear his personal opinion about the quality of the work that Shannon does, if you would.
Is that this?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That's the one that covers up the full wall, the back wall inside the yoga studio there now.
Glad you heard the presentation. What's the board's pleasure?
I make that motion to...
Second.
She didn't have the last, at the planning session, that's really, when you see it.
Oh, yeah, that's a, the last thing was just kind of a computer-generated something, and this is her actual sketch by her own left hand.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am, I think so, too.
We do have a motion on the board then to approve the location of the mural on the, what is it, Zen Den?
Yes, sir.
Okay. It's been properly seconded. Please approved by the normal sign of aye?
Aye.
And all opposed? Here and none, motion carries.
Thank you. Thank y'all for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Greta. Okay. We're, item 10, bids, purchases, and expenses, I see none. And item 11 is comments from citizens. Needing no comments from citizens. Okay, here and none. Will entertain a motion to adjourn?
I'm adjourned.
We are adjourned.